Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 10th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a roll call, please, Kristy.
Here.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
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 Next we'll have approval of the minutes from the November 26th regular and closed session minutes.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll have approval of the bills with Mr. Bierstedt.
Mayor and council, I move that we approve payment of bills in the amount of $1,893,958.90.
Second.
Subject to the controller, sorry.
You're fine. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. I just, before we get started, there is a group of young men here I would like to introduce. We got PAC 457 here tonight. They're here doing some meeting with their local government officials and that, and they thought they'd come to the council meeting here. So if you guys want to stand up, there we go. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming, guys. Okay, next we'll move on to, we'll have a report on our upcoming elections of 2020. And our deputy clerk, Jackie, will give us a little presentation.
All right. Good evening, mayor and Mr. Mayor, members of the council and residents of the city. My name is Jackie Sano, and I'm the deputy city clerk. Tonight I'm going to go over an election recap from 2019, a review of our 2020 election dates, review of the local offices up for reelection, discuss the filing requirements, and then give an overview of Badger Books. In 2019, we only had one election, took place on April 2nd. The local offices that were up for reelection were Alder Person at Large, Alder Person District 1, Alder Person District 2, Alder Person District 3, and there was no primary that was needed. Onto upcoming elections in 2020. On February 18th, we are going to have a spring primary, and we will also have a spring or a special election primary for St. Craig County residents only. On April 7th, we will have our spring election and presidential preference. May 12th, there is going to be the spring, the special election for our St. Craig County residents only. On August 11th, we will have the partisan primary, and on November 3rd, the general election. The May 12th election is the special election to fill the vacant seat for the Congressional District 7, which is why it only includes our St. Craig County residents. For the city of River Falls, the offices that are up for reelection are mayor, two seats for Alder Person at Large, and an Alder Person District 4. Each of these positions serves a two-year term. The candidate requirements for mayor and Alder Person at Large, you must be a qualified elector of the city and reside in the city at the time of the election. For Alder Person by district, you must be a qualified elector of the city and aldermatic district, and reside in that district at the time of the election. The filing requirements, there are three required documents for your name to be placed on the ballot, so you must fill out a campaign registration statement, declaration of candidacy, and your nomination papers. The nomination papers require signatures and addresses from city residents. Candidates running for mayor must obtain 200 to 400 signatures from any eligible voting resident within the city limits. Alder Person at Large must obtain 100 to 200 signatures, and those signatures must be from any eligible voting resident within the city limits. And Alder Person District 4 requires 20 to 40 signatures. The signatures must be from an eligible voting resident within that aldermatic district. Some important dates to remember. December 1st was the first date for candidates to begin circulating nomination papers for the spring election. December 27th at 5:00 PM is the last day for incumbents not seeking reelection to file a notification of non-candidacy with the clerk's office. And January 7th at 5:00 PM is the last day for candidates to file their candidate papers with the clerk's office. All of the forms and additional information can be found by visiting the website or by contacting the clerk's office. Now onto an overview on Badger Books. So what are Badger Books? Badger Books are an electronic poll book created by the Wisconsin Elections Commission. They are a system used to expedite the election day voting process by allowing poll workers to enter voter information, scan photo identification, gather voter signatures, and issue voter numbers electronically. In April 2019, the city was selected to borrow Badger Books as part of a pilot program offered through the Wisconsin Elections Commission. The borrowing program allows municipalities to use the equipment before committing to purchase. Badger Books were used in our District 3, so our city hall location for the spring election. So some of the highlights. The use of Badger Books reduced long wait times by allowing our poll workers to look up voters from the entire state and redirect those voters that might have been in the wrong location. It also streamlined the check-in and election day registration process by allowing our poll workers to scan a driver's license to pull up voter information to avoid data entry error. It also notified poll workers if a voter had already voted absentee or during our early voting period. This also decreased the necessary post-election day procedures by producing turnout numbers and lists of who voted. We also received a lot of positive feedback from our election workers who used the new technology. So what does this mean for River Falls? At this time, we've already purchased five Badger Books systems. These are going to be used for each election in District 3 moving forward, and our goal is to eventually have enough for each of our polling locations in the city. I want to thank you this evening, and does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a report from our fund committee, which is the Fellowship, Unity, and Networking Committee. And we have Nate Cross, Ken Thill, and Lanay Nelson will be entertaining us tonight.
Good evening, the mayor and council. As you said, my name is Nate Cruz. I work with the Public Works Department. To my left is Lanay from the Utilities, and then Ken Thill from Facilities. And we are one-third of the fund committee. The other six members, I know a couple are in Florida right now, sunny beach, and a couple has some family obligations. So we are the few, the proud, the fund committee tonight. As the mayor said, our committee stands for Fellowship, Unity, and Networking. And we have two main goals that we try as a committee. We are all employees from different departments. A lot of us work in different buildings. We have different hours. So we try to network employees and their families throughout the year, hosting different events both during work hours and then outside of some of those work hours for those other shifts of employees. And that just allows us to get to know one another as employees on a different level. And the second object of the fund committee really is to give back to our community in which we serve. We do a lot of fundraising, a lot of working with caring families, right now we're sharing families, excuse me, Relay for Life, a bunch of other, giving back to the food shelf throughout the year. So we do a lot of fundraising activities, allowing the employees to work together to give back into the community. So I'm gonna go pass off to May, and she's gonna go over a few of the events that, and Ken, that we are gonna go, just talking about some of the activities that we do throughout the year. And I'm also in charge of slides.
Thank you. We'll start off with 2018 in December, when we had our holiday party. We invite you this year. Next week will be our 2019 holiday party on Wednesday, the 18th, from 11:30 to 1:30. It's a great way for us to come together and celebrate a successful year and just to have a little bit of fun. Also, what the big focus for us, though, is sharing families. That's what we are striving to help. Last year, we had three families, 12 individual people, that we were able to provide a very happy holiday with gifts for them.
We tried to get you Dave Hovel. Didn't work out, so. In January, we came out to support the UWRF men's hockey team with employees and their families. We had pizza galore.
And in February, we had our annual cribbage event, and Cindy Campbell was our champion the year before, and people say Terry always wins, but Terry from the library actually won this year.
In March, we held a silent auction for Relay for Life and raised $20,059. We were a top-10 fundraising team. This is our biggest fundraising event of the year.
And on a more lighter fare in April, we kind of bring out our Betty Crocker skills, and we have a dessert competition, and we all like to partake in trying all the delicious desserts, and we do this at the library.
In June, we combined the annual employee picnic and RFMU-sponsored Fighting Fish baseball game, where our coworkers and families had a blast.
And I'll highlight more on the sponsorship with those two events that we made into one. We raised money for Basic for Local Kids and also for the River Falls Food Shelf. We raised over, let's see, $190 we collected, but then the food shelf also raised $234 for their new building. We gave out 161 food vouchers. If you donated to us, we gave you a $2 voucher to use for the food concession stand. And I'm very excited about this. If you want to go to the next slide. Our electric lineman, Luke Baumann, had a baby this year, and he threw out the first pitch with his baby Liam in his arm, and baby was good. It was actually pretty exciting to watch that.
In August, we held a school supply night, where over 300 local students benefited from the city River Falls employee donations.
And this is something that's probably near and dear to me. I like friendly competition, and I love to golf. And so on June, we did it for the newbies. We did a par-three just to kind of bring staff together. And you'll see in September, we did a best ball nine-hole tournament, and Mr. Morissette was with us, too, so.
And finally, in October, we held a Halloween costume contest with city employees dressing up in their favorite costumes.
We just want to thank you, mayor and council, for this opportunity to give you a report and a successful 2019, and we look forward to your support in 2020. Any questions for us?
Just a quick comment. You know, you guys do a lot of serious work, but you make it fun. So it's fun to be able to watch what you guys do with the employees, plus all the fundraising you guys do for serious stuff. So it's fun that you guys put a fun spin on it. I personally really appreciate everything you guys do, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have more headbands upstairs for...
Perfect. Before we move on, I just want to take a minute to recognize a very special person here tonight. Next Thursday, Julie Bergstrom will be retiring after 30 years of working for the city. I know she doesn't like to be recognized and be in the spotlight, but I didn't want to let this moment pass without recognizing her and thanking her for all the significant contributions she had made to our community and for the legacy she leaves behind. We, myself included, have come to rely on Julie, not only for her many skills or her extensive knowledge of local government in general and our city in particular, but also for her wisdom and calming influence, especially in times of challenge and change. She doesn't sweat the small stuff, and for that, I am personally very grateful. There's been many a times I've come into Julie's office like, "Oh, my gosh, Julie. Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh." And she'll just, she turns around, smiles at me, and says, "Mayor, settle down. Here's the deal." And she's, her calming influence has really helped me a lot. So Julie, thank you for taking all the calculated risks and looking forward for creating lasting and productive relationships, for building trust, and for telling us no in your pleasant but assertive way. Oh, yeah. You have helped us keep, you have helped keep our ship on course. And for these and many other reasons, we are in your debt, and we will truly miss you when you're gone. But don't forget, we got your phone number, so just in case, we need some, we need a course storage, we know who to call.
Thank you very much. Thanks to the mayor, council, previous mayors and councils, administration, all the coworkers over the years. It's been terrific. Thank you very much, and a great community also.
Thanks. Okay. Back onto the serious stuff. Okay. So next, we'll do the consent agenda. First one is a resolution appointing election inspectors for the 2020, 2021 election cycle. Next one is a resolution regarding 2020 fee schedules. This would be the resolution to approve the park and shelter fees for next year. Next one is a resolution approving development agreement with the Pavone Group for Sterling Ponds Corporate Park Lot D's and E. And the last one is a resolution approving commercial revolving loan application with Jerry's Automotive. This would be, this would approve the commercial revolving loan application from Jerry's Automotive Incorporated and David E. Wilkins Incorporated for $50,000. It would be a 4% interest loan for seven years. Anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent, agenda items four through seven.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, move on to ordinance resolutions. First one is ordinance number 2019-15. This is a mending section 10.12.030, official parking control map. No parking zone on South Wason Lane. This is the first reading. Second reading is January 14th. Does council have any questions?
No.
Next, move on to a resolution approving 2019 budget adjustment. This would approve the transfer funds for the 2019 budget for specific revenue and expenditure items.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the resolution, resolution approving 2019 budget adjustments.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay. Kristy, can I get a roll call?
Yes.
Page.
Yes.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Odine.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is a resolution approving revised state municipal agreement for highway safety improvement project, South 35 and Division Street. This is for the new jug handle intersection.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the resolution for the state municipal agreement as revised for highway safety improvement project.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Crystal. You're gonna talk to us about this.
I am gonna talk to you.
Explain this last part to us.
All right, mayor and council, thanks for the opportunity to explain this state municipal agreement for the jug handle project this evening. The jug handle, also known as Hoffman Place, is located at the intersection of State Highway 65 and 35 and Division Street. There's an existing jug handle exit ramp off of the east side of the highway, near the hospital, and this project proposes to put another ramp on the western side of the highway down into Hoffman Park and to meet in line with Parkview Lane. The purpose of this project is to improve safety in this intersection. It's dangerous with high-speed traffic on Highway 65 and 35 and traffic that has to make a left turn to come on to the existing jug handle or make a left turn to get off of the jug handle onto the highway. There's been several accidents, and the DOT got federal highway safety improvement funds in the tune of $1.7 million to improve this intersection. So in 2015, the city entered into a state municipal agreement to fund this project. A state municipal agreement really lays out the funding arrangement for a Wisconsin DOT project. It says the city pays X amount of dollars, state pays Y, and the federal government pays Z dollars. So originally in 2015, this project was estimated at $1.8 million. It was a simple ramp off of the highway. It came on to the current Hanson Drive, so there was no need for any intersection improvements at Division Street and Hanson Drive. But it really gave us some inadequate park access, and there were some other things that hadn't really been thought about at the time of that $1.8 million estimate. But that first agreement that the city had with the state had $1.7 million in the HISAP funds, Highway Safety Improvement Program funds, and then the $100,000 left over was to be split 50/50 between the state and the municipality. So in 2018, as the design progressed, the city proposed that we line up this new Hoffman Place with Parkview Lane to the south. This would allow us to have better access into the park, a nice T-intersection onto the jug handle to get us, to get us into Hoffman Park. So the DOT agreed to this arrangement, but the stipulation with this second arrangement was that we were required to purchase two parcels that were along Hanson Drive. So the city decided that that was worth it. So the city was going to purchase those parcels, and we have purchased the parcels. And we would then split additional project costs, again, 50/50. But this 2018 agreement also said if the project goes over $2 million, the city and the state can come back to the table and discuss if they really want to go ahead with the project. So that's the current agreement that we're working under. And since that time, construction has, or the plans have been even more refined. Construction estimates continue to grow on this project, and the city is getting concerned for this. So our costs are rising. The real estate acquisition was a little more than anticipated. We realize we've got some utility adjustments to make, and those adjustments are non-compensable by the DOT. We have to do those out of our pocket. And the WISDOT estimates continued to rise. And then finally, we're still under that stipulation that the project bids over $2 million, it might be postponed indefinitely, which at this point, when we have this much into it, we'd hate to see the project go away. So this fall, we requested that the city, or that the DOT provide the city with a revised state municipal agreement, and our objective with that was to cap our costs. So if the project continues to snowball like it has, our costs will be capped, and then it will also commit the DOT to doing the project no matter what. So this is kind of hard to see, but this is the agreement that's before you tonight. There's three sections of this project, I guess, three phases. Preliminary engineering, real estate acquisition, and project delivery is the third stage. So the preliminary engineering phase is to be paid 100% by the DOT. The real estate acquisition and the project really preparation, which includes our utility adjustments, is to be paid almost 100% by the city. And then finally, the project construction would be at 1.7 funded from the Highway Safety Improvement Federal Funds. And then from 1.7 to 2.4 million, the city and the state would split that 50/50. And then anything over 2.4 million, the state would pay 100%. So the city costs for this project are really split into two categories. One are costs that we need to do to get ready for the project, such as real estate acquisition, the utility adjustments, and those come in at about $855,000. And then finally, the second part of our costs are the costs that we'll pay to the DOT to deliver the project, the actual construction costs. And that's looking like about $358,650, for a total of $1,213,650. So the anticipating funding source, anticipated funding sources for this project include fire impact fees to the $275,000. The reason that we're seeing fire impact fees in there is because of those two parcels that we acquired on Hanson Drive. The front half of the lots is required for the project. The back half of the lots will likely be used for a future fire department project. So we split the real estate acquisition in half. Capital costs will pay for $300,000 of this project. The capital costs are from the Highview Meadows subdivision. In 2002, 2003, a capital cost study was done when that subdivision was going in. It identified four projects to collect costs for. This is one of those projects. So we have $300,000 that have been contributed over the years to put towards this project. The sewer, water, and electric funds will be used to fund the various adjustments that will need to be made. The streets budget was used in 2019 to pay for paving on the east jug handle. You may notice that the eastern side, that the existing jug got paved this year. That was 2019 streets budget. And then finally, the capital projects fund will fund the rest of the project for $383,650. So with that, I would take any questions.
I apologize, Crystal. I should have asked this question yesterday when we talked. I noticed on the east jug handle that there's not a right-turn-only out or in island that there is on the west side. Other than signage, is there anything that's gonna prevent somebody from turning left to go south out of there?
I believe an island will go in with the project this, in 2020. I can look at that.
Okay.
But I believe that the top will have an island.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And along with that project on the highway, they're gonna be extending out the turn lanes as well, so people aren't having to like slow down in the speed, in the travel lane. They'll actually have a greater length.
There would be a dedicated turn lane to turn right, yeah, onto these.
I know like right now, they're pretty slow, and I know a lot of people slow way down on the highway, and that people, I've seen near wrecks because of that, people slamming on the brakes and...
Right. Yep. Yep, so there'll be a dedicated right-turn lane to get onto both of these jug handles.
Thanks.
I just, I'm happy with the work you guys have done on this. I think I've made it known, and I think this is, the idiots we have at the state with this project, it's a good thing we're doing this because the costs keep going up, and if we can get them tied into a certain dollar amount, they can take five years. I don't care. They're paying the money, we're not.
Right.
I think you guys did a good job with this, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else got anything? No?
Sinage. Have any play with how those jug handles are gonna go in as far as directions for people passing through and using them?
Are you talking about our wayfinding signs, or are you talking about proposed highway signs?
Technically both, but in particular, I was referring to the wayfinding.
So I'll just talk, regular highway signs are included in this cost estimate and will be part of the project. The wayfinding signs, it's not anticipated that there'll be any, any conflicts, I guess, with those.
I have one quick comment, just to say that it isn't a happy thing that these costs are going up, but I do take some solace in the fact that, A, we're dealing with a dangerous intersection, B, this is going to benefit the fire department at some point in the future, and C, it's also benefiting Hoffman Park. So I think we're getting more out of it than just an exit ramp that's safe, and to me, that makes it worth it.
Anybody else? Thanks, Crystal.
Thanks.
You do have a motion and a second.
Yep. Motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have the Administrator's Report. If anybody's got any questions for Scott. Scott, whatever you've got for us.
Just a couple reminders. Tonight is the last council meeting of 2019, unless the Mayor or I would have cause for emergency meeting, I guess, so let's hope that that doesn't happen. Next meeting will be January 14th, 2020. The retirement party for Julie is December 19th, two to four. We will be having a party, despite her objections, so there will be cake. And I'll have a few comments then. I probably can't make it through comments tonight on that, so I'll save those for Thursday.
City offices are closed on December 24th, 25th, and January 1st, just a note to the public. But as you know, the city is open 365 days a year, so we'll have plenty of staff providing services as needed, but the offices will be closed here. I did want to introduce Mr. Jason Stroud, who will be appointed to the Assistant City Administrator position soon in Julie's absence, so I appreciate having the chance to work with Jason over the last year and a half and welcome him to the team. And the Council, obviously, will be seeing more of Jason in your regular work, so welcome, Jason.
Want to stand up, so people know who to complain to? That's the guy. Thanks, Jason.
Any other questions you might have?
Anybody got anything, Scott?
I'm good.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Let's see, I just got some appointments. I gotta point people to, first thing is the Municipal Board of Canvassers. The MBOC consists of the municipal clerk along with two qualified electors of the municipality approved by the clerk. The MBOC makes the official determination of the outcome of the election for municipal contests and processes and counts eligible provisional ballots. The term shall be two years, commencing on January 1st of each even-numbered year. And so this year, I'd like to appoint David Iyers, Stephanie Brown, Patricia LaRue, and Terry Swinburne to the MBOC through December 31st of 2021. And the next one is the Municipal Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers. The Council approved the ordinance 2016-15, creating the MBAC, and the MBAC consists of the municipal clerk along with two qualified electors of the municipality approved by the clerk. The MBAC is responsible for reconciling absentee votes cast in each election. The term shall be two years, commencing on January 1st of each even-numbered years, and those would be Rhonda Davison, Carrie Shiner, and Melinda Johnson. And they would be appointed to the MBAC through December 31st of 2021. Wow.
I move for the Mayor's appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
That was painless.